And they come up, I was interested if it was replacing the existing garage or how it kind of went with the site of the lot.
Yep, I'll let the applicant speak about that.
All right, are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Chris Iverson and currently I'm residing at 1914 Main Street in Hopkins. I've owned the duplex since 1998. And I guess a couple of the comments, a couple of comments I would make are, the building has been a duplex for 94 years, or 96, I'm at my math skills, but, and it's recent actions actually by the council that caused me to come forward in terms of, in July, changing the square footage requirements for an R2, R2B lot from 10,000 to 5,000. And then in 2014, the whole change for the regulations around the ADU and making ADUs even possible. It's interesting to me that we're referencing things from 1963 when we're talking about, to me, this feels like regulation and policy have kind of gotten out of sync a little bit possibly, because it seems that the current momentum is to increase density in the city. And being that my property is two streets from a community corridor, I know it's not adjacent, but I can stand on the street and I can see the corner store from my sidewalk, I can walk to the light rail. Certainly, my neighborhood is very walkable and very, you know, urban in nature, whether it's single family or not. And then the other comment I guess I would make is that I have no path forward in terms of, I can't apply for a variance, there's nothing I can do. The R1A designation sort of locks me up, whereas if we're concerned about density, per the staff report, 70 of the properties directly surrounding me all could do exactly what I'm proposing to do, simply because they're a single family. There's no issue in terms of the lot size, my lot size actually exceeds the criteria now that the council has taken action in July. And even with building footprint allowance, I would be well within my limits even by adding, now with the new criteria that the council passed this month for a 1,300 square foot structure, I'm still within the building footprint allowance should I have the ability to move forward. So it feels a bit like a technicality that I'm stuck in here because the use of my property and the consistent use of my property since it was constructed in 1922 has always been a duplex. And the zoning has changed around the property. And so I guess that's why I'm petitioning to see this change so that I have a vehicle to move forward. And I've been very communicative with my neighbors about this. I started communicating, our block club is very, very active. And in June or July, I started communicating with them, letting them know of my interest in doing so. And I think there's several letters of support included. I do know that there was one letter that was received today that is not supportive, which was a surprise to me because in all of the email communication I've had with my neighbor, she has expressed support of this. So I don't, I can't speak to that. But, but yeah, I mean, it feels like it is a bit of a technicality considering my lot is the correct size and, and in terms of if I were to proceed with the accessory dwelling unit, I would, I would be, you know, there wouldn't be any issue in terms of the structure addition. And I should also comment that the property right back to back with me already has this exact scenario. There are two single-family homes sitting on the same sized lot, as is the same case between 34th Avenue and 35th Avenue. Also, one lot has two homes. So 35th Street also has precedent for multiple structures on one lot in terms of dwelling units. So I don't know if there are questions or comments.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Lukey-Pier, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Iverson, I'm a little bit intrigued by this case, mainly because it seems to me as though the current legal non-conforming status of a duplex on a single-family lot is the equivalent of your neighbors having a house with an ADU. You kind of have one already. The conundrum for me is that ADUs only apply to owner-occupied residences, and you live in Hopkins. So I'm a little bit wondering why this rezoning is being proposed for a property that it isn't even possible to have an ADU at.
So actually, I, well, yeah, not until, I adopted a teenager a few years ago and I relocated temporarily. And I had a home in St. Louis Park that I've actually since sold, so I'm actually temporarily residing in Hopkins until I return to the duplex. So I bought my first home in Longfellow in 1989 and have been a long-term resident there and an active member of the community even while I wasn't living, actually physically living in the duplex. It was a life circumstance that had me relocate temporarily.
So if in the future this did get approved and if you did construct an ADU and if in the future you moved, you are fully aware that you would not be able to use that ADU in the future, even if you have invested money in?
That is, yes, no, I understand that, yeah. No, my plan is that's, that's, I mean, I had always intended on returning to the duplex and, and so that is, that is my intent.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I missed it. Could you just describe where on the site you're, are you planning to take down the garage and put the ADU there? Can you just kind of walk us through?
Sure.
To your point, there's a, I just kind of want you to give us a picture of what it's going to look like.
Absolutely. So I've been consulting with Christopher Strom, who is the architect that I would probably be working with. And the plan would be, yes, that re- replacing the garage that exists today with, with the unit above the garage. So it'd be detached. That would be the plan.
All right, are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name's, my name's Peter. Peter Berdurney, I live at 3055 22nd Avenue South, just on the other side of Hiawatha and a couple of blocks north. I want to talk a little bit about this staff report. I'm finding it a little bit of an interesting bit of creative fiction. I noticed you guys approved on consent agenda a rezoning from R1A to R3 to allow a structure that had lost its legal non-conforming status. Reading the justification for that, it reads an awful lot like the justification for not allowing this rezoning, but the exception that that is farther away from a commercial corridor being five blocks away from Broadway versus two blocks from Minnehaha. I also think it's strange that we're talking about this rezoning in terms of the ADU that is not proposed here. This is simply a rezoning to R2B, it is not an ADU request. Also, the fact that ADUs are allowed in R2B means that policy supports them because they're allowed. So these arguments that saying that policy doesn't support it just kind of seem to be walking around the issue for me. With point two, whether the amendment is in the public interest, I think it's rather short-sighted that we don't take into account that we are allowing more people to live in our great city. Yes, he would benefit, he would be able to get another tenant, but also someone would benefit by living here, and I think that's important. Also, we're talking about the character of the area as if his duplex didn't exist. It's been there for nearly 100 years. It clearly fits in the character of the neighborhood because it's been there since forever. It's really not his fault that in 1961, we decided that the city should look like the suburbs and we zoned everything R1A. So, you know, this, this talk about reasonableness of use, again, he's not requesting an ADU, so we're asking him questions about an ADU, but there's no ADU before you. It's just about the R2B. He clearly has a duplex that hasn't destroyed the character of this neighborhood in 100 years. Whether he wants to build an ADU or not is kind of none of your business right now because that'll come later. If it's allowed in R2B, then it's already been decided that's allowed, and you guys don't really get discretionary approval over that. Then finally, number five, like I said, the, the change in character, the change in character has been more supportive of density in this location. It's walkable to the light rail, it's walkable to the Minnehaha commercial corridor. And it's density that already exists. It's, the character is that this density of a duplex is there. So I don't see what's there. And finally, I want to talk a little bit about non-conforming status. I've been thinking about it a lot lately, it's a weird thing to think about. It's basically saying that, you know, this is here, we're glad you're here, but we'd really prefer that you weren't. It just feels like kind of a weird message for the city to send that, you know, we, we really, this R1A zoning is saying that you'd rather this was just a single-family home, that, you know, he tore it down and, you know, either renovated it into a single-family home or it could be torn down and turned into some ugly McMansion, which would be totally allowed by right, and would probably do more harm to the character of the neighborhood than building an ADU. So, yeah, the idea of it just being non-conforming in the first place makes me uncomfortable. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yes, next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Terry McEwen, and I live at 3420 33rd Avenue South, just down the block. And I want to just verify that Chris has been very open about his plans for his dwelling there and sent out multiple emails and has outlined the process that he's going through and what his intentions are. And I live there with my husband and we're both very supportive of what Chris is doing. And I've talked to the neighbors on either side of us and they are also supportive. Chris has, when he lived in that duplex, he was very involved in the neighborhood association, was very personable and responsible with his property there. And we have every faith in him that when he builds the, if he gets the permit and is able to build a new garage with a dwelling above it, it'll be very respectful to the feeling and the architecture of the neighborhood. So we, we're totally supportive.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the pub, yes. Oh, oh, well, okay, I see. We'll, we'll close the public hearing and commissioners, we just have the one rezoning application before us. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to move to approve the rezoning and would like to speak to that.
All right, is there a second? Let's hear the motion and a second.
Thank you. So I think, as always, staff has done an excellent job of, of making the case here, and I think it could really reasonably go either way. From where I sit, I think we're reaching the lifespan of our policies around land use in the city, and we're in this sort of transitional phase where, you know, the last comprehensive plan was done 10 years ago and we're updating ours now. And so I expect we will see a lot of these small things here in the next few years as we transition to the new land use policies and hopefully zoning code update. In this case, you know, I think we try to avoid zoning one parcel in a different way than its surrounding properties. And I think the case that the staff made really had an eye to that policy argument, and I agree with that in general. But in this case, I think that there are plans, statements in our existing comprehensive plan, including policy 1.13, that talks about density around transit stations and other policies that support this rezoning to allow this duplex that's been there for almost 100 years to become legally conforming. And again, it was the applicant who spoke about the reason behind the change being to be able to add an accessory dwelling unit, but that is not the application in front of us, we are just looking at the rezoning. I think the public interest here is met, criteria is met, because there is an increased need for housing, in particular in neighborhoods like this one, which is transit oriented and transit-rich, but also has a lot of sort of diversity of housing types in it. It's not just larger apartment buildings, but the smaller scale density that I think a lot of people are interested in living in. The compatibility, I think, piece is, is that the building is there in its existence as it was, and the form of the building is compatible with the surroundings. Here, we're sort of getting into this tension I see in our current zoning code where we're trying to regulate both use and density and form through the same tool. And often, we run into these conflicts, but in my mind, the compatibility of form in this case makes the case for the rezoning here. There are reasonable uses under the current use, but I think that, again, the fact that this is banned a duplex for all of this time makes the case that that criteria is met. And finally, I think the change in character criteria, let's see, I'm, let me just remind, refresh myself what that criteria was. I'm trying to do our findings that are required legally as when we disagree with staff here, and so just bear with me so that I have this in the record. So that would be whether there's been a change in character. You know, I actually think that there has been a change in character in this part of town, as the train has come through and created more desire for housing. But again, I think you could also make the case that this building in particular isn't changing in its own character, that it fits in with the neighborhood, and what we're really doing is providing more flexibility in the use of an existing property. So with that, I will stop making my findings and.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lukey-Pier and then Commissioner Vreeland.
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion, but actually for different reasons. I actually think it has everything to do with the ADU application, and I'll say this because I, this isn't a case where a random resident's coming in and wants to convert a building to a duplex and it's going to be spot zoning and set a horrible precedent for other areas of the city. The fact that this building, since its inception in the 1920s, has been a duplex, it was originally constructed as a duplex, and has operated as such for almost 100 years, and in fact, it's legally non-conforming, it's already been used as a duplex legally. But the applicant's here because they intend to reside in the residence and add an ADU. I think it has to do mainly with the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law in regard to ADU. I think that the intent was that owner occupants could add an additional unit, and with the owner recognizing that that is in fact a requirement of the ordinance, but the fact that there's a technicality regarding permitted uses and the fact that it is a legally non-conforming use of the property versus an already established R2B zoning, to me, seems like a little bit of a hiccup in the intent behind why we have that AD ordinance that we do. I think the intent's still being met as long as the property owner resides in the dwelling. Therefore, I don't see a way or a reason to prevent this from happening, given that it, all those factors are in play, that it hasn't, has always been a duplex, it's, regardless of zoning the intent of the ADUs and an owner occupant could add to a duplex, and so on and so forth, so I will be supporting the motion.
All right, Commissioner Vreeland and then Commissioner Rockwell.
Yes. It's a challenge sometimes to advocate what we like or don't like, because that's not particularly our job. I would love it if staff could remind me again of the definition of spot zoning and whether this, how this applies to that definition.
Yeah, Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, spot zoning doesn't necessarily occur when you have one piece of property that has different zoning than surrounding properties. Spot zoning is more of when you have differing zoning without any kind of policy rationale that supports that different zoning. That's really the key difference between sort of a mix of zoning that has policy support and, and mix of zoning that is just a sort of arbitrary and without policy support.
So you are saying that this is not spot zoning?
Well, it sounds like maybe there's a little bit of a disagreement between staff and the commission about whether this might be spot zoning. We tend to think that the term "spot zoning" is overused, so we typically don't use the term. It's sort of a loaded term, but we found that on the balance that the rezoning was not supported by policy. But Councilmember Bender has pointed out that it is in a transit station area, one can identify policies that support increased density within that transit station area radius.
And I would tend to support the staff recommendation because I think my job is to look at the letter of the law, in this case and others, even though that's a challenge. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Rockwell.
Thank you. I, you know, I agree with Councilmember Bender's findings, but wanted to add a little bit on number four, which is the one that I have the most trouble with, which is whether there are reasonable uses of the property in question under the existing zoning. So, you know, when I initially, so I think this is a very close call, and I think this is the toughest bullet point, and wanted to acknowledge that. The, you know, reasonable uses of the property, I think you can say from one perspective, there are, there are reasonable uses of the property because it is non-conforming use. And so you're using the structure as it is meant to be used. But I think that the property is more than the structure, and we have also said in our recent laws that it is reasonable to have an ADU with a duplex and to have an ADU with a single-family home. And so it seems to me to be unreasonable to have a duplex that has been there forever. And, you know, for, for those of us who have bought houses, I actually am on the planning commission, I could not tell you definitively what the zoning of my house is. I think it's R2B, but I don't know. I think most people don't look at the zoning of their house, they say, this is a duplex, I can reasonably assume that I will have the rights that I understand attached to duplexes. And so I think that that speaks to the reasonableness question here, that, that it is, in fact, you do not have the, the full scope of reasonable uses of property, and I think that's a relevant question. And so that's, I just wanted to add that onto that, that finding.
All right, Mr. Wittenberg, do you have a quick clarification?
Sure. Commissioners, just a reminder that rezoning is one of the only applications that comes before you where you need not make every single finding. It's sort of an on-the-balance analysis, and the key controlling finding is the consistency with the comp plan. So lest you agonize over every single finding, you need not do that in a rezoning, but you definitely need a policy rationale in the, in the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was actually what I was going to say, this is a legislative decision that will go to the city council no matter what this body decides. And I do think it's a case where you can certainly find policy in the comprehensive plan update, or the last comprehensive plan, our existing one, that as staff did, that was on one side, and, but I do also think that there are plenty of policies in our comprehensive plan that support this policy of rezoning this property. And so I think, I don't think it is a clear cut and drive question here, and I, I think on the balance, particularly given the fact that this is an existing duplex, it's very reasonable to support the rezoning here. I think the whole entire area could be considered for, for duplex zoning in the future, and that's a policy question that I think neighbors will have to weigh in on as we go forward. But in this case, it seems to me that we have clear policies to support this in the comprehensive plan.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I'll just add, I'm supportive of the motion as well, and to be clear, I, I don't believe that our policies support R2B zoning every place that has the urban neighborhood comprehensive plan designation, you know, particularly farther away from established corridors. I do think in this location, there are some unique characteristics, and I also wanted to cite land use policy 1.8, which is to preserve the stability and diversity of the city's neighborhoods while allowing for increased density in order to attract and retain long-term residents and businesses. In this case, this property was built as a duplex, in the staff presentation, it was noted that there are several other duplexes in that vicinity, so I think it's completely appropriate to preserve that. It's not realistic for us to somehow amortize those duplexes and, and create a neighborhood that's entirely single-family, and I think it's appropriate for them to be established. That policy statement also refers to increasing density, and I think in this instance, if we have the zoning match the, the type of building that's there, it would allow the opportunity to add an accessory dwelling unit, and that would add additional housing options in this area that potentially could be more affordable than some of the other new construction that we've been seeing. Also, in this area, there is higher R as well as C zoning within a couple of blocks of here, so I think it's appropriate to have that transition. As Commissioner Bender noted, it's also within the study area of the 38th Street Station Area Plan, so it's within relatively close proximity to higher frequency transit service. So I think those are locations where, where additional density is supported. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning, and please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Dedman?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
80.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item 10. Our next item for discussion, actually, our last item for discussion is item 11, the Thor Construction Headquarters, and staff is Ms. Sather. And I understand we have, the applicant has submitted some revised plans, so maybe you'd like to just go over some of the changes we saw this at committee the whole not too long ago.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, commissioners. The project is Thor Headquarters at 1256 Penn Avenue North and 1235 through 1243 Oliver Avenue North. As President Brown has indicated, the applicant's been working very diligently since receiving the staff report last week to address all of staff's concerns. And in fact, the applicant is in agreement with all the conditions of approval. But what I'll do is just walk through the plans and the, that were addressed in the memorandum as well, of all the changes that have occurred since the last, the staff report was published last week. I think this is just a particularly good outline of what's going on in the, in the intersection. This is from the draft travel demand management plan that shows the purpose of the project is to provide for the Thor Development Headquarters, plus the principal parking facility and other uses. And then there's a lot of activity going around. So one of the additional submissions was the travel demand management plan, and I'll address some of that too at the end of the presentation. I'm just going to go clockwise, starting at what will be assumed as 12 o'clock. So on the north end of the site, you're seeing, and north is up, that would be the Plymouth Avenue facade. The applicant is proposing to add a stairway connection from that center retail tenant space. It was previously only accessible from the corner at Penn and Plymouth, and staff was hoping that we would get one additional pedestrian connection. I also wanted to note that there is a retail tenant space on the southeast, or I'm sorry, the northeast corner of the property, and that will have a direct access that's just off of that vacated Oliver Avenue, just on the east side of the, the building. So staff has added a amendment to the condition of approval that this access point shall be required, but only if approved by the city engineer. We have about 16 feet from the existing property line to the end of curb, and so we certainly don't want to make a requirement today that's not actually buildable. Now going to the south end of the site, you'll see that there is a, a new loading area with, for trash pickup and recycling pickup. So that would occur in the alley, that portion, that portion of the property is zone C2, that alley is also zone C2 as well. Now up to the southwest corner of the building, there's a new location for a transformer. The floors one and two would be notched out to provide a location for a transformer that would be easily accessible from Penn Avenue North. Staff has discussed with the applicant, it's going to have the same screening material as what is proposed between floors on the parking ramp, so that perforated metal. And then finally, along the Penn Avenue facade on this, on this first floor floor plan, you can see that the applicant is now providing a bicycle storage and repair area. This is something that we talked at great length about at the, our two previous committee of the whole meetings, and a combination of that bicycle storage space and then also providing glass in the elevators. Staff believes that this proposed plan really activates Penn Avenue North, which is something that we were striving for and that the applicant has provided for us. On the elevation plan, I would note, on the far left here, you'll see, I'm going to just zoom in, because it's pretty hard to see. So at the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole, we also talked about some, doing something interesting with that concrete wall, just because it's approximately 11 feet at height at the corner, and it definitely is a long linear area where pedestrians will be walking. The applicant is working with Juxtaposition Arts to create an art piece that would be adhered to the building. What you're seeing here is a 3D. What you're seeing here is a 3D interactive art piece that is of the North Minneapolis neighborhood. And so it would have the projections, kind of signifying height, streets, and building layouts. Let me go back to full screen. And then I just noted here on the plan that pedestrian access, that's in the right-of-way. And then this is just in plan view, where you can see the new location for the trash pickup in the alley. And that loading area also indicated the, the windows now that we have along the Penn Avenue front edge, where they're meeting their minimum window requirement, including the, the glass elevators, that kind of adds that nice vertical element to kind of break up the, the building into two as well. I just wanted to show two pieces of the proposed, or the draft KDMP. Just as a note, this is not something that the Planning Commission is required to act on. This is something that will be considered through Public Works and Seapet Staff. So right now, at the old vacated Oliver Avenue, you'll see that there's an existing stop sign, and one of the proposed recommendations may be to add a signal there. But again, that will be handled through the administrative process, through the review of the travel demand management plan. So I just note, the memorandum was published today and included amended findings for all of the, the review to this revised plan. And staff has revised our conditions of approval that start on page seven of the memorandum, and then on to page eight. And with that, I can take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Lukey-Pier.
Hi, Shannon. I just was looking between the, the packet we received versus the one that was out today. And is there a revised site plan as well, or are we to reference the previous one?
The, the previous site plan is still accurate, as well as the landscape plan.
And do we have any counts on bicycle parking on the public right-of-way along Penn or Plymouth at all?
We do know that there's at least a minimum six that's at the corner, and then enclosed, I, I put 12 in the report, but certainly the bike storage area is sufficient to hold quite a few more. We did probably ask the applicant how they plan to provide the interior storage.
Fantastic, thanks.
Thanks so much.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. This time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to start first and just see if you have anything to add. Please state your name and address for the record.
D'Angelo Suncason with Thor Development Group, out in Fairleigh right now, 5400 Main Street Northeast. I have nothing further to add than what Shannon has already added, but to speak to the bicycle, there'll be vertical storage and repair units. There'll also be vertical racks throughout the garage that aren't counted per that number.
All right. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Crowns, are you a question?
Yeah. Could you describe how you're planning to light the top floor of the parking structure on the south side of the project? I don't see any light poles, any elevations or renderings.
Architect, Lawal Scott Erickson can answer that specific question.
Sure. All right. If you don't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Do I state my home address or my business address?
You can state your work address.
Okay, thanks. My name is Mohammed Lawal. Work address is 100 Portland Avenue South in Minneapolis. We are, the south end of the parking ramp, which is what we call the extended bay, will have vertical lights that have downlights that shine directly onto the parking ramp surface itself. And I believe that's being done by Horwitz.
Do you know if those poles are gonna be on the perimeter of the structure or more internal?
I believe they're planned to be more internal, because we don't have parking on the southern edge. The parking is laid out so that the cars would face east and west, as opposed to south, where the residence is.
And you're proposing use full cutoff fixtures?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Commissioner Lukey-Pier, do you have a question for the applicant?
I'm actually for the architect, but--
For the architect, all right.
I'm Mohammed. I'm just wondering if you could just update, are there gonna be, I have the bike storage space, I really like and appreciate. I'm just wondering if along the street, there's gonna be opportunities for people to park their bikes, like some sort of bike racks, public amenities like that?
Right now, because we're building up to the property line, it would be challenging to have bike racks unless they're outside of the property line on Penn and, and or Plymouth. So--
Are they proposed at all, though, like in the, in the landscaped areas or anything like that? I know we talked briefly about along Penn, how it's really, there's no division between the, the street and the sidewalk and some means of separating the two.
We don't show any in our plans. I think the bike storage space is where we do have, I think right now, we've laid that out for 10 to 12 vertical indoor bike parking stalls in that space, so--
I asked you this question for the applicant, Ben. Would you entertain the thought of adding any additional publics, along, public bike parking along Penn Avenue, just as a means of creating more of a buffer, since you're right up to the property line?
I think we will open to consideration, maybe not to the form of setting back the building, but--
Oh, no, no, no.
[bell]
Yeah, no, I, I was referring to the public right-of-way, so--
If the city's open to that, we'll be open to it as well.
Good stuff on that one, cool, thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions for the applicant? Fortunately, since we're having problems with the microphone, that might be good. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have four applications before us. Conditionals permit, two variances, and then the site plan review. Staff has noted some additional conditions in the addendum, which I think we can just incorporate into our motion on the site plan review.
I would move the staff recommendations for approval for A, B, C, and D.
We have a motion and a second for, to approve items A, B, C, and D. Commissioner Lukey-Pier.
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion. I feel, I just wanna speak to the fact that we've really worked with the applicant on this one through our Committee of the Whole meetings, and they've been very gracious and willing to accept a lot of the feedback we've been given regarding the public right-of-way, access to that front arcade, the, the bike storage and, and other features, especially that art wall, which I, I hope they'll continue to develop. I would just add that any, any ability they have to add bike parking in the public right-of-way would be appreciated, as well as attention to the landscaping and any sort of public right-of-way improvements that would make their building more welcoming and hospitable, given the pedestrian nature of the neighborhood. And, and again, to make that arcade more inviting and, and ability to sit down, depending on the tenants that you have to occupy in the future. But I do wanna applaud the applicant for really rising to the occasion on this. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't do this very often, but I think this project is so extraordinary, that I just wanted to take a moment and say that. I really think it's an exciting collaboration between the county, who is here, and the city staff, as well as an exciting private company that's bringing jobs to a part of town where we really need this kind of investment, and this kind of forward-looking, hopeful, positive investment. And so I just wanted to note that, you know, this is gonna be a great building because of the thoughtfulness of your response to the Planning Commission, but I think it's so much more than that. And I'm really excited that this is the first of many really great, positive things to come to this part of town, thanks to so many efforts by so many.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reland?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
8-0.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 11. That also concludes our meeting for today. We have Committee of the Whole on Thursday, our next meeting is October 5th, and our meeting is adjourned.